Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabelle, Texas on January 13th, 2021, at the RFP 30pm for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on January 8, 2021, at 11am in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 5510415510, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. Presently, we have all board members. Dave Barrow, Dr. Lallon, myself, Mr. Friedman, and Bill Donahue. And joining us on Zoom, we have Jason Starkey. So we have a full board present. For me, please have everyone stand for the flag of the UDT in the invocation.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless us today as we try to make good decisions for our district and for our customers as well.
Moving on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Board.
Yes, I would like to make a public comment.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Greg Clement. And I am the current Windstorm and Hail Insurance Agent for Laguna Madre Water District. Appreciate your time and your hard work serving on the board. I just wanted to address the board and let them know that, you know, Eddie Salazar, Mr. Salazar has been making a diligent effort to get multiple quotes for you guys on the windstorm insurance. But unfortunately, just the way the market is right now, I wanted to kind of explain why he's been able to deliver multiple quotes in the past few years. When we started writing the insurance for your organization, it was in January of 2016. And you guys had approximately 8.2 million in values insured. Our premium was $47,500. The next bid that was close to ours was $98,000. You guys made some changes in your values and the amount that we're insuring right now is over $21 million. So that represents an increase of about 256% in insurable values. Your premium on this last RFP that we turned in was at $141,564, which is still not the 256% increase. What's going on is there's an organization that's called AMRIS. And it's a consortium of insurance companies. And when you have values of $21 million and so, you're going to have multiple companies having to write layers of coverage on that insurance. For instance, this year, we're splitting the risk, it's probably backwards. But we have 10 different insurance companies that are each taking a part of the $21 million risk. The bottom line is there's just not that many companies out there left that would be able to give you a quote for your full limits. And certainly not at the pricing that we're giving you. I also did talk with Mr. Salazar. He felt that the January 31st date may be hurting the participation of some other agents being involved in giving you guys quotes. And we were able to get the renewal date pushed out to April the 1st if the board elected that quote for a total premium of $142,435.69. So basically, we're charging you $870.88 to extend your policy for two months. That would give other agents in your organization more time without the holiday season to secure other quotes if that's possible. Just a little bit of history about myself. I was born in Edinburgh, Texas, went to Sherland High School and Texas A&amp;M. My wife is from Brownsville. She's part of the Garcia heirs, so we technically own some land. I think the board bought some land last year from the Garcia heirs. We have some land down there in the taxing authority. I know that purchasing sent out another RFP just today looking for an agent. And I think it's in an attempt to be able to give the board additional options to look at. But it's going to be using our quote. And I guess I'm making a pitch tonight to let you know that, you know, if you look at these premiums that we've done through the years, we're still underneath, even with all the rate increases, what your actual rate per dollar was from 2016. So I feel like we've done a great job for you guys. We're certainly willing to do what we can. Getting the policy extended for two months for $870 is, I think, should show you something that we're trying to work and do the best job that we can. And we're not charging additional fees. And our commission on this policy is 10%, which is less than a lot of agents would charge. We pay 17%. So we're not greedy, we're helpful, we're trying to help the board. And I just wanted to give a little understanding of why you may only have one quote. I believe the only other bid that was turned in on this after talking to the risk manager managers on the account was approximately $400,000. That was after the RFP was turned in and all the documents were done. With that, I guess that's all I have to say to the board. If anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer those by email.
Thank you kindly for sharing that with us. We can't make any comments on the actions, but we will look further into this and explore. Appreciate, and I know we've worked with you in the past and it's kind of a good relationship. So we will keep chipping away.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else comments? Staff, board? We've got a lot of folks today. No? Okay. Let's close that and move along to item four. Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting from December 16th, 2020. Motion approved by Mr. Donahue. Second, taken by Mr. Dave or all those in favor?
Aye.
There are any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Item five, General Managers' Report. Carlos.
Mr. Chairman, members of board. I just wanted to report on COVID-19. And the ones we had tested for up to January the 5th is number five employees with zero on the negative and two positives. And then we have two pending with three recovered. So it's kind of iffy still. As you all know, where there's still kind of harsh out there with one of our employees that has passed away on the electrician side. So, and the employee is also taking care of the other family. So as of right now, we emphasize it, keep wearing the mask. Wearing the mask and getting the temperatures as we go in and out of the office. And we'll come back the second time we come in, we do it again and record all that. So we've been keeping records of everything. Hopefully that we can keep it down here at the office area and out on the field with all the other employees. So emphasizing protocols, keep doing what we have to do. And heard about the vaccine that's coming out. So pretty soon we'll have it available for other employees. And at least open up the front part of the office where they can come in. There's a shield in front of the desk there where protects employees from incoming people to pay the bill. We're going to hold off and we'll let the board know when we do open the front. At this time, we were since Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, today. We've been remodeling the door, the payment door. And we've opened the front so they can come in and pay just these last few days. We'll get it back to normal tomorrow. Hopefully, we can keep employees safe thereafter. Okay. On another note here that I have, the other item is the capital projects, a financial workshop that we had scheduled for last Saturday. And then the open meetings, information for the Board of Directors, Open Meetings Act that we need to bring up to the board members on their responsibilities and duties. So I wanted to schedule something for that. And then today was the day that we're supposed to come back and find that meeting for you all to meet again.
The open meetings and the responsibility is only about like an hour or so.
The responsibilities of the open meetings is about, I think, 30 minutes.
Is Brian the one conducting that meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I think he can do it in 15 minutes.
I can, I think they're both supposed to be about an hour, but.
Yeah, that stopped us before.
I think we put it down officially as an hour for each one. But I bet you we can probably get it done quicker.
And do Bill Donahue and I, are we the only ones that need to attend or is it every year?
I think everybody should go, at least a refresher.
Scott should have a master's in that department by now, maybe a doctorate.
Can we schedule that one just before like a workshop for the regular meeting? Is that possible?
I think it is possible. I think it'd be best to do that one, open meetings for board members right before the next meeting maybe.
Yes.
And then the other one, the capital improvement, that's a lot of information for the board.
It's going to be a Saturday morning.
Next three years and then the financial reports. I need to be aware of what account goes to each budget item. So yes, it'll take a weekend for that.
Carlos, how much time do you need to prepare for that? Are you guys already ready?
We're prepared for the capital improvements. We're kind of prepared already. And it'll be like a couple of hours on that one. For both capital improvement projects and then the financial part.
When do you want to do it?
I would like to do it at the beginning of February, like possibly a weekend. It's available for everybody to attend on your board because you're available.
I got a dumb question, but is Saturday morning, is there, is there logic behind why it's always a Saturday morning or is a workday a possibility?
It's, the reason we have done it on Saturdays is we have more time in the morning unless somebody has working duties that they can't attend. But that's the most logical day for the board to attend and be here a couple of hours.
I mean, is it, I guess I would ask members of the board, is a Saturday morning more convenient or is a weekday morning a possibility?
Doesn't matter to me. I would prefer to not take a morning of work.
Okay. That settles.
Saturday morning.
All right, I guess you guys are saving some deer's lives.
The 6th, 13th, 20th, or 27th of next month?
Six preferred by me.
I might have counted on the six.
The six, I would say the 13th is probably not a good one.
20th?
Or the 20th.
20th is fine.
I'm getting on the 20th.
Scott, does the 20th work for you or not work?
20th works for me, yes, not the 13th.
Yeah, the 13th is bad for me too. That's baby girl's birthday. Let's do the 20th.
Okay, that sounds like the plan right there, the 20th of February. And we'll go for.
8am?
Nine.
Nine?
Seven.
Earlier the better. It's 39.
Can we split it at 8:30?
8:30.
8:30 is fine.
Sold, 8:30am.
8:30am and we'll be done by 10. Thank you for that part. If you have any other questions on anything.
Carlos, which one are we doing before the meeting that I'm doing? Is it Director Responsibilities or the Open Meetings Act?
Open Meetings.
Open Meetings.
Okay.
And duty, the responsibilities.
So both of them?
Both, right.
Okay, I'll cram them into an hour or half an hour. I think the course on what's recommended, the presentation on the Open Meetings Act should be about an hour. So if we do that for an hour, I can get, I think I can do both of them in an hour.
Then it sounds like a 4:30, 4:30 meeting. And we don't want to be done early if we're meeting at 4:30 because then we're waiting until the 5:30 starts anyway, so.
So it's at 4:30, so I got about an hour. That'll work.
Okay, we'll make it 4:30 on the 23rd.
Okay.
20th.
All right.
27th, 27th of January.
Okay.
Is that your final answer? 27th, 4:30.
27th of January. 4:30. Okay, thank you all very much. You have any other questions? I'm here available for anything. If you have questions besides the meeting, call me up, I'll be here.
Thanks, Carlos.
Thanks, Carlos. Okay, thank you, Carlos. Move along to item six. Discussion on possible action to approve the bids received on the following property struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale conducted on November 3rd, 2020. Legal inscription and undivided 1/8 interest and up to 12.934 acres, more or less being lot 5 Garcia Bayfront Subdivision 1, subdivision in Cameron County, Texas, said 12.934 acres as described as the fourth partition and a deed dated February 16th, 1984 from J.A. Garcia at all to Mary Isabel Leal at all in volume 1360, page 567. Deed records of Cameron County, Texas, account 4735000010005105.
Okay, and we have Ariana Uriela for the next two agenda items.
That is correct, sir. Good afternoon. Ariana Uriela, on behalf of Lime Barker, Goggan Blair, and Sampson, I'm one of the attorneys at the Brownsville office. I'm here to present this bid that was received on our last resale and that was on November the 3rd of 2020. I'm here on number six, number seven on the agenda. I can explain a little more if we go down to the analysis of the bid receipt for tax sale properties. Thank you. This is a property that was initiated back in 2016. You'll see on top of the analysis, it's a seat that we brought on behalf of Cameron County. And let me just get the correct entities. It's Cameron County, the city of Port Isabelle, and the district Laguna Madre Water District. This is brought back in December the 29th of 2016. We didn't, we took a judgment until October the 7th of 2019. So this property or these properties took a little while to get to get to the judgment, but we, we got it. And we tried selling it on June the 2nd of 2020. You'll see on the analysis on your right top, on your right hand side on the top, you'll see the date of the tax sale that was on June the 2nd of 2020. Unfortunately, it didn't sell. This is a property that was valued at $70,000, a little over $70,000 at the time of judgment. We tried reselling it again on November the 3rd of 2020 and it actually sold or at least there's a potential buyer for the property if you approve this bid. The amount of the judgment, just so I can retract a little more back, the amount of the judgment was $67,745 with 75 cents. So what that means is that was owed to the entities, that was owed to Cameron County, the city of Port Isabelle, the district, and the school district. So that was owed to all those entities. Thankfully, we did sell it in November as a resale or at least there is a potential bidder. The cost of sales that, what the cost of sale was $2,585. The amount that the buyer, the potential buyer or new owner bid was a little over $39,000. To be exact, it's $39,800 that they bid for this property. What the amount, if you approve this bid, it would be, the amount that we would disperse into the entities would be $37,215. So we just take away the cost of sales mandated by law, we need to pay our sheriff who did the job of recording the deeds or at least handling the payments of the, of the sale as well as publications as, I think it's the Herald that we still use and by law, we need to, we need to do that. So we cover those costs and so it would be $37,215. Right now, it's still valued at $70,426, so it hasn't lost any value. It's still valued at that. And so those $37,000 would be distributed between Cameron County, the city of Port Isabelle, the school district, and Laguna Madre Water District. How we divide that up is whatever percentage was owed initially to the entity. So as you can see, you were initially owed $2,321 with 12 cents. This was what was owed to you at the time of judgment. These were taxes that were delinquent and you were owed this. You would get 4% of that and it would be, you would be getting now if you do accept this bid, it would be $1,488 with 60 cents. If you would approve this bid, the prospective buyer, the new owner would be Mitchell Thomas. It looks like it's an investor. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it right, but it's B-E-T-K investment. And you'll see the address if you have any questions on that. But yeah, definitely, if you have any questions, please let me know. We are doing online tax sales now, even our resales are online. So it's way easier for bidders to buy more property. So I think resales will not be as common in the future as we've been seeing that most properties are selling and are not even going to a resale. So this is one of the last ones we will probably have and hopefully we don't have many more that you won't be receiving that full amount like the $2,000 that you were supposed to receive.
Is there an extra item?
4%. 40%.
No, 4% of the, of the total proceeds that come in on that.
So this is a foreclosed property that we're talking about here?
Yes, correct. Whenever we take judgment, we proceed on selling it, we foreclose on it.
We're not the only entity weighing in on this decision, is that correct? Like the other three above us?
We still need to go through Cameron County, the city of Port Isabelle, and Point Isabelle and the, and the school district.
Because we're only due 4%, whereas they are due a much larger percentage. And it sounds like you haven't got a decision from them yet. Were the first entity that you've approached?
That is correct, sir. You were owed, I think they were owed much more, so that's why. Yeah, for example, the school district was owed $31,000 in taxes and you guys were owed $2,000, a little over $2,000.
So hypothetically, if you know, two of us agree, but two of us don't, then it doesn't need to be unanimous, I guess is my question.
Correct.
The entities unanimously must be in favor of taking a lesser, lesser amount than the value of the, of the judgment.
Everyone has to agree.
Okay, I mean, for us, it's, it's miniscule, obviously, is my opinion. I mean, we're talking, we're only owed 4% and the difference is, I mean, I'm a football player, but it looks like 800 bucks. So I could care less. I would be in favor of just moving forward, but that's just my thoughts. It's not emotional. Let my colleagues weigh in.
Thank you.
Is that correct? We're all in favor? Aye. They are? Are there any opposed? None? Carries, thank you. Move along, guys. On seven, discussion of possible action of the relocation, of the resolution approving the bids received on a tax resale considered on November 3rd, 2020 for the property mentioned above.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey. Second, taken by Dr. Lallon or all those in favor? Aye. None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item eight, Director of Operations Report.
Chairman, members of the board. Presenting the December, December service calls and callouts that were made, there's not much of a difference in the distribution side that comparing the December 2019 to December 2020, there was like the two cost difference. So it's pretty much the same as it was for both, for both months. In the collection side, there was a, an increase of about 30 costs, service costs. And most of that was in preventive maintenance. But other than that, there was, it was pretty close as far as the number of callouts and the service costs that were made. And then again, on the retreatment and dust stations, comparing November 2020 to December of 2020, since I'm comparing this year, I don't have history since we just started with this, this past year. The real difference was the contact with existing food service establishments, which was a difference of four. But the total difference was six as far as the number of calls or callouts of these guys. Any questions on any of this? Thank you. The next area that I wanted to bring to the board with the, a presentation by the different departments. As you heard, last month, we had four departments, which is water, wastewater distribution and collections. And this month, I was bringing in maintenance, lab, safety, wastewater construction. However, wastewater will not be here tonight. The manager was contracted COVID, so unfortunately, he won't be able to make it today. I'll probably bring him in next meeting with the electrical department. But for now, I'd like for the maintenance department manager to come up.
Hello, board. My name is Bart Perez. I'm the maintenance department manager and official safety inspector. Assistant manager is Alex Gonzalez and mechanic helper is Robert Delgado. In our, in our department, we service and maintain 40 district units. We also maintain the water plant, wastewater plant, and lift station emergency generators. Maintaining two forklifts, backhoes, front end loader, machinery, tractor, utility trailers. We do the oil changes, AC work, tire replacement, electrical brakes, suspension, computer diagnose, injury repairs, transmission service, cooling service, hydraulic repairs, talk to, talk and order parts with vendors, gate codes, minor, minor body repairs. Welding also help other departments when needed and assistant managers. We're on standby, listen, my assistant on callouts. We also help the warehouse department when needed.
We greatly appreciate your efforts and working for the district and the things you and your staff have done. Any questions?
Yeah, so you're on the emergency list, so that's for customer service callouts like, like.
Yes, yes, we're on a standby list.
So you guys are cross-trained in that area as well as mechanics as well as. That's great.
So we also do that. Shore backups, water leaks.
You guys do it all? That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
The mechanic shop, the mechanic shop is house, the warehouse, but they do house calls as well. Do all the water plants or wherever there's a water leak, if they need, the pump goes out and they need to go out there and fix it at whatever time it is. And all the managers in all the departments and their assistants are all on the callout list. So they do alternate on a weekly basis. The next department is the lab.
Mr. Chairman, members of board. My name is Evelyn Saldiva and I'm the lab manager. I've been employed by the district for the last 18 years. I currently have an A water and A wastewater license. I have two lab techs in my department, one with the B wastewater, one with the B water and the C wastewater. The main function of the lab is to take care of all the analysis on the. The main function of the lab is to take care of all the analysis on the wastewater permits for the wastewater plants. And those tests include pH, chlorine, BODs, CBODs, turbidity, total suspended solids, process control, ammonia, intercoattens and E colite. Then on a yearly basis, we're um, I guess tested by doing the DMR study, which is the discharge monitoring report. And uh we get, we purchased tests from ERA, which is Environmental Resource Associates. And they give us tests, we run them, we give them the results, they test them and they give TCQ a copy of our results, letting them know that we're up to par on our daily tests. Um, we also do um ammonia distillation. It's a comparison of distilled and non-distilled ammonia and that's required by the EPA yearly. On the water side, we do the lead and copper program and that's every three years. And I think most of you were here this last time that we did it in twenty twenty. Um, that's thirty samples and that's also reported to TCQ. Um, that's the main function that we do daily. We also help other departments uh will calibrate some of their meters, their handheld, uh go out with them and sample, make sure that they're doing the proper uh methods. And uh we'll help them collect samples or hand them sample bottles and um just anything else that they may need.
What are your points where you sample from?
Uh, from the wastewater plants. We do the effluent and the influent.
Is there ever need to sample at a residence or at a at a business?
We've had, when we've had odor complaints and such, we will go and do their testing from their tap water. And also the lead and copper is from their inside sink or their bathroom and just the cold water.
Great.
You've been here eighteen years?
Eighteen years.
Well, how did you start?
I started as dispatch.
Dispatch?
Uh-huh, that's how I started. And then there was an opening at the lab and uh I don't think anybody else applied so well. I got real lucky and.
Awesome. How long have you been in the lab?
Uh, sixteen and a half years.
Six, so a long time. And so you probably didn't start in charge of the lab, but now manage the lab. How and we have three, three people in the lab, you and two, two other techs. How long have we had three people?
Uh, just this year. We've always had four, but when our current or our past supervisor left, we have a vacancy still open.
Okay. Are we getting by with three?
It's not easy, but you know, we do what we can and um my thing was to always is helping me to get that replaced.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've never not got, we've never not got a report done that we have to get done since we lost our last, when did we lose the supervisor?
In February twenty eighth of last year.
Okay, so in the whole year, we still got all our tests done?
Yes. We've had to borrow uh people from other departments to help us.
Help out a bit? Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, uh she has uh one of her employees that has accumulated quite a bit of uh vacation. And so he's gonna be taken off uh on and off within the next month and a half. So we've talked to, she's talked to the uh water and wastewater and they're willing to help her. They're gonna send somebody to help her out with that. And we didn't really lose that that supervisor. He was pretty much uh doing safety procedures and whatnot. So what we did is we split him up. Safety person, the safety officer who's coming up next was with the lab, but almost ninety, ninety-five percent of the work that he was doing was in the uh safety issue department. So we just decided that this was an area of great concern to us to make sure that all the departments were following safety protocols. And so that's what he's doing.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so safety.
There you go. Uh, my name is Felipe Samora. I'm the safety officer. I've got experience in about twenty nine years, in February, about twenty nine years. I've got a A water license and a C wastewater license. Um, but my duties are perform accident and incident investigation whenever there's somebody gets hurt or they hit a uh gate or something that I gotta go do the investigation and report it. Pictures and you know, even take them to the go get a drug test and and all that. Uh, enforce no matter what our district company's safety policies, procedures and regulations. Observe work in progress and assure safety equipment is worn and procedures followed. What this means is I'll go out to the work sites when they're like the the distribution crew is working on a leak or something like that. I'll go out there and make sure they're following procedures, wearing F P E and having the, you know, the the site secure, the nothing's gonna cave in, you know, and making sure that they're all safe, you know, and if they have any questions, they'll ask me, you know, and I'll be able to help them on. Um, receive and respond to employees inquiries regarding workplace safety. So you know, they have any questions, I'll ask you about them, you know, and I'll try to help them on. Help develop policies and plans to reduce employee risk. Uh, help HR administer occupational injury work injured workers program and workers conversation. Ensure employee safety training, classroom lectures, demos and hands-on instructions are being kept up to date. Review accidents and suggest how to prevent similar uh future incidents. Uh, prepare narrative reports and incidents impacting the Luna Madre Water District. Conduct special and periodic inspections of district facilities, structures and operations to identify safety environmental hazard. Prepare and follow the follow up on the inspection reports and answers and requirements of payment and send them to Mr. Romans and we can discuss if we to make any changes or anything like that. Execute effective safety and hazard controls and evaluate risks and hazards and suggest corrective actions. Uh, like I said, I mean, I try to work with every department, every manager has been uh very helpful. And uh they've uh they've taken me in, you know, lifting arms and I work with like very good. You know, and they're all, I think they're they're happy that we have somebody dedicated to that. You know, so with all that, I mean, do you all have any questions for me?
Is this a new position that was created then just last year?
Yes, sir. In the week.
Were you having problems before that and that's why you did it?
Absolutely, yeah, that was it.
No, sir. What would happen is that, like I said, he was doing about ninety percent on safety issues, which we felt that after talking to Mary and HR, we felt that we needed somebody full-time and safety to be able to get into the not only EPA regs and everything else that uh we were missing. And so that's when we went full-time.
This uh the safety officer is the only one that doesn't have a separate department. He is in-house with administration.
I'd like to mention that the previous uh safety officer, he retired from the district. Uh, in February, so I don't know if that was preemphasized, but he retired from the district. And uh, he's working, I think, with part of the department or so. But uh that's when we uh switched over just safety by itself. And the session was always there, the safety officer, but like Robert had mentioned that the previous manager was doing like ninety percent safety and like ten percent managing the laboratory. So since he retired, that's one position that Felipe has built in. And uh, and the the manager from the lab is everywhere. We we kind of isolated those two, separated them and have more influence. So safety is uh, it's one of the the uh manuals that we have for all the employees that they have to go by. And there's a monthly report that each department fills out and we review them and make sure that everything is totally okay and kept up to date. Right, I have to evaluate all the the procedures and you know, as far as confined space entry and stuff like that, you know, I have to evaluate them bring them up to date. And that's what I've been doing the several months, you know, trying to get all all of our plans, you know, in order. And that way, in case I need to go into a manhole or something like that, I'll order some equipment also. So I mean, be able to monitor the gases and the manholes, a tripod for fall protection, uh stuff like that. But yeah, we're trying to get this uh uh safety department working and going.
Have you, did you have any incidents last year that I'll?
We had minor incidents. Uh, no major accidents or anything, just made minor incidents with vehicles and stuff like that. And anything major.
And what are our COVID safety nineteen precautions and education and updates?
Well, what we try to do is like Mr. Alon said, is try to have the people uh in every department measure their their temperature. You know, uh, wear their face masks, wash their hands, uh, you know, as much as they can. Uh, and keep their distance, you know, don't try to be all in one room and everything, you know, just keep your distance and everything. And clean, you know, the door handles, you know, everything, you know. Um, and the vehicles also, I've seen all the the guys cleaning their vehicles, you know, the disinfectants and all. I saw the heavy equipment also that's been doing it. So everybody's been uh been good about it.
One of the areas where we felt that we needed a lot more uh looking into was as far as what we've been doing, evaluating each department and finding out what kind of safety procedures things are geared to. And looking to see if we can find some good uh films or clips that we can have with the department so we can provide some training for the community. One of the things I asked them about that uh with the board is that we got the climbers certified. Uh, it's something that had never been certified, so we felt that they needed to be certified. So we got the got a whole trainer came in and uh trained climbers a lot of times.
And I had also spoken to Mr. Romans about because as far as confined space entry in there, we have to be trained uh at least once a year, you know, for that. And that's one of the things that I'm also looking into uh so that way we can have all our guys are going to the manholes, the clear fires, stuff like that. Uh, get them trained and then have one or two guys, you know, be certified to be a trainer. So that way uh, you know, that trainer can train them every year. We don't have to get somebody else from the outside to train them every year.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mike, that person is here. Pedro Gonzalez is the top dog in Florida Climbers Resort.
I just real quick, I think that's a a really important position. Safety department. I mean, it's what, when I think about climbing into one of those manholes, no way, get me out of there. That scares me. Um, and climbing up those towers. So safety is one of those things like, you know, the public never thinks about how safe you guys are until suddenly one day somebody's hurt and then suddenly, hey, why weren't you guys? You know, why didn't you have things in place? So.
Well, we have a major accident.
Right, that's what I mean. If there's an accident, suddenly, suddenly it's on us, suddenly it's on you. So the fact that we're proactively doing that, uh, one, I hope always prevents those accidents. Cause it's, you know, you guys do dangerous things. So I I think that's essential that we're doing it. It's probably a pain in the butt for most departments, you know, having to deal with the safety guy, but it's essential to make sure you're not hurt. So so keep it up and uh I'm glad we're doing that and hopefully it's one of those things, if we never hear from you again, it means you're doing a great job.
Thank you. That is our major goal, be everybody safe. Uh, the next department is the Construction Department.
Hello, welcome.
Chairman, I'm a member of the board. Uh, my name is Ante Alwachoa and I've been working for the district for thirty years, over thirty years. And uh I'm in charge of the construction maintenance department. And I supervise five employees and I have one of them right now. Uh, my assistant is Pedro Gonzalez. He's a competent climber, he's one of the clients. And uh I am responsible for any construction problems that arise down in this area. Uh, some of the problems that we encounter are includes pulling out and installing pumps, repairing motors, constructions of newer airlines, uh metal fabrication, climbing towers, uh doing preliminary work on change orders with projects uh that are bid out. Uh, and it can, sorry, I have. I have some pictures that I provided. Uh, the first one is installing a uh a motor on water pipe number two. Uh, the other one, repairing a clarifier at Isavanka. Replacing all the such tools. Uh, another one, we are fabricating a airline at Helvestine. So we do all the fabrication, we go on pure and we weld, we do everything, every bottle fabrication. So allow savings on that. And then the other one is a dock that we built for at our climate material. So basically what we do.
Is that for fishing on the weekend?
It's actually in chilly water that. So that's what we do. We basically do everything that breaks down and try to fix.
Great.
Aye.
Thank, thank you very much. We appreciate.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Robert. Let's move along to item number nine, consider approved changes to pay scale for operational staff. Robert?
Yes, sir. This is uh what I brought to you last at the last meeting uh and wanted to get all the uh the licenses, the the separate licenses to the individual pay scale. And so I've been there for your approval this time.
You were gonna go through and do a little bit of work, right? Was there some follow-up stuff that we had to do? Just wasn't there a reason we tabled it?
It wasn't, it was a discussion item only.
It was only discussion.
It was only discussion at that point. We are working, uh, I am working with uh HR with Mary and we're looking at the salaries for for everybody. What we brought to the board last year, uh, the Mr. Starkey that that we should go ahead and do in-house. It's been kind of tedious. It's uh really time consuming. Uh, we're looking, we're trying to compare uh job descriptions with uh P U V, uh Harlingen Water Works and McAllen Water Works with ours. And uh so far, what we've found is that uh we are uh being underpaid compared to those. Uh, some of them just went up and they're starting paid. But uh it is, the the district is being underpaid as far as some areas. So we haven't really finished. We were just barely getting started. Uh, whenever we finish that, we'll bring it to the board. But now this is just to get the uh different licenses in order and get it into the respective uh pay groups.
So um basically, we're 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 reallocating or actually identifying where certain licensuries should should fall in regards to pay groupings. That's what we're looking at right now. And and the data that I'm looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, and you did a great job of preparing this to explain to someone like me what I'm looking at. But everything I'm looking at with our current employees and their current license, um, basically, we're looking at a difference of roughly forty-four thousand on the annual is what we would incur. And that's just, I took that off of your salaries, HR twenty to twenty-one. The differences uh, am I, am I interpreting this data correctly? That's that's in column eight?
Yes, sir.
As I worked my way down that page and I add up the sum of those, it's forty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents, call forty-four.
That's correct.
So basically, that's what we're looking at tonight, gentlemen. Um, the 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 work that I think my colleague, Dr. Alon, was referring to is what you guys are currently engaged in as as it pertains to salaries as a whole, pay scales as a whole. You know, I think we're ready to uh look at our next, you know, bump, you know, but we wanted the information from, we wanted apples to apples comparisons. I think we encourage you to not only just look at what people are getting paid, but benefits that are available or not available in, you know, competitive, you know, districts that we unfortunately lose, you know, well-qualified personnel to. So um that's what you're doing right now, but as you do that, you brought this action item to us. Um, which, you know, as I look at this and and I and I look at the logic behind a document like this, I think it's all logical. I think it all makes sense, you know, why else would someone in, you know, in our district go out and ascertain, you know, a a another certificate or, you know, aspire to be licensed, you know, um, and and therefore qualified to to do the task at a at a higher level, if not, you know, financially, you know, rewarded for that. So I would be in favor of this, especially considering the modest increase that, you know, it would put, you know, on our financial burdens and paying our staff, you know, I don't I don't like losing quality individuals. Um, and and, you know, I trust the staff and all the work that you've done, if this will help us keep them. them and, and inspire them to go out and further their knowledge in their field, I'm all for it. So there's my two cents.
Is that a motion or a comment?
Didn't know if anybody else wanted to talk, but I'll go ahead and say, make a motion to approve.
A motion on the table by Mr. Starkey.
I'll second.
There's a second by Mr. Don. Are all those in favor? They are, and opposed. Done, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move along to item 10, at least this keeps us competitive. It's a key word. At least this keeps us competitive.
Here's the main thing, is we're bumping up our starting pay by a dollar 20 cents, right? Dollar 10, something like that? Trainees?
Yes, yes, sir.
Like, that's really the biggest chunk of the money, right?
And Mr. Starkey was correct on everything he mentioned. It was just the beginning to make corrections of the licenses themselves. He was correct on everything.
Carlos, can you call my wife and tell her that, please? This quarantine's getting to me.
You might be wrong then.
Charles, item 10.
Good evening. Yeah, I was just bringing up the, just the status of our, you know, various projects that are, that are, you know, starting up with construction. The first one is being the altitude valve installation and the skater improvements. Looks like skater should be getting wrapped up this week. And for the altitude valves at the elevated storage tanks, anti-buoy that needs to get a bypass valve replaced, and that's scheduled for tomorrow. And then the wisatcha valve for the, the other tank on the island, the agreement is part of what got approved at the last meeting and contracts are getting signed today. And we're looking at the June 21st being the week where we have a pre-construction meeting. And I want to go ahead and start on that, too. Still doing that valve install that same week. So it was a 45-day contract. So we should have the altitude valve back working by the end of February, Eric Wisatcha and Andy Bowie as well. So, you know, with those in place, we'll be able to have those hydrologically closed and, you know, if you pressurize the system, see how that's gonna help us to improve pressures here on the island. So that's, you know, that's kind of the ongoing work for that first bullet. I guess moving on to the second one, lift station 137, those are the two lift stations under contract with Southern Trenchless. And they're still at the point of providing some middles which are under review. So that's, they haven't mobilized to the site yet. It's really just through US middles, getting helps through kind of details. And then on the third bullet, the main office generator, we have approved some middles. And so he's in the process of getting his equipment. I know he wants to get that automatic traction switch delivered before he mobilizes, but he'll be on site when the generator gets in. So we can inform that we're, and issue for a target date of the end of April to have the generator ready to go here at the office. So it sounds like next hurricane season, a backup power is needed. And so I guess moving on to the next one, water plant and clarifier improvements, the contract got signed right before the meeting here. We're having our pre-construction meeting on June 19th. And one of the things we're gonna discuss is, while we're waiting, we have about five, six monthly time before the equipment actually gets here. So there's really no reason for the contractor to mobilize until we receive the equipment. And so the, we're gonna have a discussion with operations to see if we can get the plant running before the contractor comes in to our storage clarifier. And then we'll take it offline for the duration of construction. So that's, that's the status of water plant. In the last one, the water distribution on the Blue Boulevard, we had a meeting, I guess the last week in December was South Fudge Island, that they already have 30% clean set for their water lines. And so, you know, they've been sending us their data. We had our coordination meeting. And then I guess one of the questions is, you know, now that we have bond approved, the, the way the, the bond project was approved was, you know, fixing the disjointed pipe, you know, was it near the Capri Gorge or some of that general region, and getting the bypass made in place. But with the skater coming back online, since we did have that one break there at that intersection by the McDonald's, we kind of were forced to get a better understanding of those valves that we were really on touching. So we might be able to actually get that valve that's broken closed at that AP substation there by Sun Chase back in working condition. And with those changes of conditions, we'll be able to get a lot more data to, you know, be in a better position to possibly recalibrate the model and see what a plan could be to, to get that anti-buoy tank fully in. And I mean, I don't know if we could get some input from Frisian Nichols on that potential option, if we want to look at that, you know, maybe construction.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Charles Keterko with Frisian Nichols Engineering. We evaluated the water model and validated the water model, I guess, right about a year ago when we were working on the bond, the new bond program that was voted on in November. And what came out of that is a previous engineer had, had done the model, and then we were brought in and to validate that model. And we did so by using pressure recorders throughout the system. At that time, we were using the best data that we had available, which was 2011 billing data and we had five escalation factors and information from the Chamber of Commerce and Tech Board on the board as far as growth projections and things like that. One of the things that we didn't have from an information standpoint, and it's something that the district has done a great job as far as moving forward with, is adding the skater system to the elevated storage tanks on, on the island, as well as installing the altitude valves on those elevated storage tanks. So now what we can do with the model is we can get real-time data of how those tanks are fluctuating. Additionally, we knew that we had some closed valves that were impacting the model, exactly where those were was somewhat questionable. I think we've got a better idea of that. And so once the district planned, they planned to correct those valves, I think by the end of February. So once those valves are corrected, then again, we're moving another restriction within the system. So within the bond program, the original recommendation was to install a 16-inch line down the Blue Boulevard to complement the paving project and take advantage of that where the district wasn't having to pay to repave that, that project. But however, with the additional information that we have now, with the skater on elevated storage tanks, some of these restrictions, enclosed valves being fixed, before the district moves into that capital cost of replacing that line, we'd like to recalibrate that model just to make sure that that's still reasonable. Because we weren't having to make assumptions because we didn't have all the data that we will have now. That's kind of the, the background on that.
We still be able to, as it goes, fall in line with the maybe, or are they gonna go ahead and do it at?
Well, yeah, I mean, as far as the baby schedules, I mean, they, they wanted to start this summer, but I don't think that was funded. So the realistic schedule is more probably in the 2022 year. So, so really getting our utilities in, deciding what level of water improvement we're gonna put in as that. They're, they're at least looking through their finishes on. And then there's storm storage intersection. We're gonna see if how much line is adjusted for drainage. I mean, in addition to, you know, improving the, the. So that concludes the interview.
Thank you, Charles. Item 11, consider and discuss for possible award of task authorization amendment number three for lift station rehabilitation.
I mentioned, I'm Charles Keterko with Frisian Nichols Engineering. I'm the project manager for the lift station rehabilitation projects that are, are ongoing. The amendment that's been brought to you all tonight, I'm gonna go through it kind of briefly, kind of touch on a few items. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. This amendment has to do mainly with the three items. The first one is lift station number four. When we first entered into the, the agreement with the, the district to rehabilitate lift station number four, that was right around a year ago. Rehabilitation projects are kind of tricky. A lot of times you don't know what you're getting into until you're into it, kind of like fixing an old house. During the, the process of the design and evaluating lift station number four and understanding that its current condition and the development that is proposed in the Laguna Heights area, this lift station is gonna become one of the district's main lift stations and more critical lift stations. In that evaluation, looking at rehabilitation, we evaluated that that's not the best approach and that replacement is gonna be the better long-term solution for the district. With replacing it, there's some, there's a lot more effort from an engineering standpoint, especially on the structural engineering side, because we are redesigning the entire structure with rehabilitation. We're mainly just replacing pipes and pumps and things like that. So there's a lot more structural engineering that we, we just couldn't have accounted for. Additionally, with the new lift station, we're, we're needing to adhere to the TCAQ regulations for emergency provisions. And so with that lift station, we're designing it with a backup diesel-driven pump. That way, if you lose power or the pumps go down, you have an alternate power source and another pump to, to back up that lift station. We also added odor control to that facility. That facility is right next to a lot of residences in that area. And so we added odor control to that. And all those things were not originally within the scope of this project. Along with the, the structural engineering, we do have to do some additional queue of technical engineering. We're gonna do one bore right at the center of the wet well, so we can get to understand what the soils look like and also what the dewatering will be like for the contractor, so they can get a more refined bid. So are there any questions on lift station number four, the changes?
Yeah, so define long-term. You, you referenced Charles, better for the long-term. So what's the life of this bad boy gonna be estimated in your professional opinion?
Yeah, I know, as far as lifespan goes, it's all, you know, how, how well are you gonna maintain it? But, you know, as far as it being for the water development worth funding, I think we have to guarantee that it's 20 years out, I believe, or at least for the repayment of the loan. So, yeah, you're, you're looking pretty far out.
To beyond 20 years?
Yes, sir. Yeah, easily, beyond 20 years.
But it's warranty to 20 years? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
The contractor will warranty it for one year. We'll probably have probably five-year warranties on the pumps and things like that.
And what was the importance of a geotech again? Walk me through that item again.
So the, the biggest issue with the existing lift station number four is the, the wet well, which is the, the hole in the ground, the concrete hole in the ground that all the waste, our wastewater goes into and is stored while the pumps are pumping it back out. And that wet well is too small. So we need a bigger hole to hold it. So we're proposing a 14-foot diameter wet well that'll be about 25-foot deep, 26-foot deep. And that's the, really, the, the biggest thing that needs to be fixed on that, on that lift station.
So taking soil samples to create a 14-foot diameter bowl of concrete and 25-foot depth benefits us how again?
So when the, when the concrete, when, when the contractor is digging to install that wet well, what we're proposing is caisson construction, where you, you pour it, pour your, your concrete ring and you dig out the middle and it slowly sinks down. You hit the bottom and you pour the slab on the bottom. So the reason we're getting a geotech is because we want to know how hard that, that soil is. And more importantly, the, the water table is always a concern in this area. So the contractor needs to know how much dewatering he's gonna have to do while he's digging.
A lot.
You're right. So that's what we're trying to get clarification on.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's all the questions I have for lift station four.
If not, we'll move on to item number 10. Lift station number 10, lift station number 10 is for rehabilitation. We're continuing with that rehabilitation. However, once we started evaluating the hydraulics of lift station 10, we ran into some, some challenges because lift station 10 actually shares a force main with lift station four, which is gonna have a lot more flow coming from it than it is now. The challenge that we came is that when lift station four cuts on, lift station 10 sees a really high head, a really high pressure in that force main. When lift station 10, when lift station four is not running, we have a really low head condition. And trying to find a pump that will operate efficiently throughout that, that pressure range is something that we couldn't find. We tried to work with all the manufacturers, couldn't find one. So what we needed to do is design a separate pumping system with a pressure transmitter that would indicate when we were seeing a high pressure at lift station 10, then our larger horsepower or full pumps will run. When lift station four is not on, we see a lower pressure situation in lift station 10, then we have an alternate pumping system that would, would cut on and pump during those times. So that's how we're, how we're balancing that situation.
So you have a jockey pump, basically?
A jockey pump, yes, yes, sir. It will be, you know, at the same, the peak flow, it's still sized before flow of the station, but it just, it's a very differing pressure situation. Yeah. Any questions on lift station 10?
No.
Yep. Item number three is, is some effort on the last, the last board meeting, the board approved change order number one to Southern Trenchless contract for lift station 1 and 37. And in that change order, we added two lift stations, lift station two and the wastewater, the portage of wastewater treatment plant, lift station to that contract. And that was kind of a value engineering effort that we were able to negotiate at a cost savings to the district to add that to the, to the Southern Trenchless contract. What item three entails is the administrative effort to pull those two lift stations out of the other contract, put it in this contract, incorporate the value engineering items, and then get that resubmitted to Tech Board and all the board. So although it came out of cost savings, we do have some administrative effort to facilitate that. And that's what's included in item number three.
Quantify those administrative efforts, if you would.
Okay, so originally, lift station two and wastewater treatment plant, lift station were included in the overall lift station package. And that package is about 99% complete. It's supposed to be submitted to the water development board on Friday. So what we had to do is we had to pull it out of those drawings and out of those specifications and then CAD up the changes that we negotiated with Southern Trenchless. We have to sign and seal those drawings, including electrical, and get those submitted to water development board. That's along with just the general coordination with Southern Trenchless to make these changes, negotiate the changes, do the change order, and also the additional construction administrative effort to be on site for this, for these changes. Because we do, we do anticipate having to be on site a little bit more because we, we are kind of, there's some design and construction as we work.
And that, the price tag on what you just described, generally speaking, is?
Thirty-eight thousand dollars. The additional, the cost for change order number two?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You know what? I don't, I don't have that in front of me from last.
That's okay. You've answered all my questions. So the sum of everything that is on the action item is 64,813 increased to our previously approved 1,037 and change?
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve.
Motion on the table for approval by Mr. Starkey.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lalan. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Non-motion carries? Thank you. Let's move along to item 12. Thank you, Charles. Let's move along to item 12, consider and discuss for possible approval of partial abandonment of easement for lots one, two, and three, Seahorse Harbor, re-plant number two subdivision.
Yeah, this, this is the re-plant of several lots, there's about 20 lots on the subdivision, and they're gonna just be replanted to create only three lots at the same location. It's at the south end of the Little Boulevard and Mysole Drive on the island. So we're requesting a approval to abandon or partially abandon the utility easements that'll be aligned for the three lots versus the 20 lots that are gonna be vacated. And all these utilities are gonna remain in easements with the proposed changes.
We'll go through. Oh, sorry.
It's just an abandonment, right? That's all we're doing here?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Dr. Lalan.
Approval made by Dr. Lalan, made by Mr. Water. Are all those in favor? Opposed? Done? Motion carries? Thank you. Move along to item 13.
Chairman, members of board, I had a meeting, phone meeting with Brian and Eddie, and we talked about what rates. We wanted to recommend that the board consider bringing a committee together with two board members, so we can work out this methodology that we've come up with. It's similar to what, you know, Ruby Museum, and we kind of discussed it. And we need the board members to come together with us and, and work this out together because before we bring it up to the board again. work this out together because, uh, before we bring it up to the board again. And, uh, I think it would be, uh, Brian, uh, you recommend that also?
My, that's my recommendation. This isn't a closed, this isn't something we can discuss in closed session. There's no exception for it. So I think the better thing would be to meet in a committee with two board members who can then go back and report to the board. And then that committee can meet in private with Eddie and myself or whatever, whoever they want to meet with and discuss it and be comfortable with the methodology and the result and then come back and report it to the board. I think that would be more beneficial than discussing it in open session and detail.
I agree with that. I volunteer to be on that committee.
Yes, yeah, I, I volunteer to be on the, thank you.
So, uh, uh, we can meet, I guess, uh, sometime whenever you're available.
Yeah, I would, I recommend the board go ahead and make a motion to appoint that committee and who the members are gonna be on it and then have that approved. And then you guys have the power to record and probably put it on the agenda next time if we have time to meet.
Sounds great. Thanks for your assistance, everybody in this manner.
So if somebody wants to make.
I motion to form a committee.
But it's not a motion. It's just, it's a, you can't make a motion when there's not a motion on there.
Yeah.
What do we gotta do?
I guess I'd recommend that, uh, just, uh.
It's a recommendation, yeah.
Just have an informal committee.
Jason, uh, come together with us.
You can make a mo, you put on the agenda to make the committee for the next meeting, but yeah, I mean, it's not a motion item.
Yeah, just, uh, no action on it and then.
Well, there's no action on anything. This is just for report. So all, all you're doing, if you want to make a committee, you need to just make the committee and make it an action item for the next meeting. And, uh, appoint the, the committee. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. So we'll come back, uh, much, you.
Just discussion.
Report on this and, uh, some media research.
No, sorry. Uh, let's move on to item fourteen, consider and review the expenditures from December first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Review, acknowledge. Just made a motion to acknowledge.
Acknowledge.
Knowledge made by Mr. Starkey. Someone else acknowledged?
Acknowledged.
Acknowledged by, uh, Dr. Lallan. All those acknowledged, yes?
Yes.
Great. Appreciate. Let's move to item fifteen as adjournment at six forty-five P M. Thank you, everyone, and good.